Have a slide thing on the side.
Oh, yeah. Nope, this is fine.
August nobody bumps it.
Yeah. What was your question?
Is this for the, is the planning?
Yeah.
Minimum watt coverage.
Okay.
Which is the more than why I look at this, I don't know if it was a typo and it should be maximum watt coverage.
This is actually the one that's not the most recent.
I wasn't sure if it was the most recent.
Yeah. If you can over here, I have it.
Aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, how are ya?
How are you? How are you?
Good.
Good, good.
Hi.
It is on line. It's the only. I think it's two thousand nine.
How are you? How are you?
Did you, did you draw plans on it? I couldn't find them back then.
What species do you have the most?
Eleven.
Eleven.
That's, that's.
Still old.
Yeah. So what changes are you looking at? Jesse Doe.
Jesse Doe. It sounds, it sounds like an unknown, I don't know. The last John Doe, that's right.
So you're looking for a lot line?
Oh, that's the C and J property.
Yeah. Is there anything else out there?
Yeah.
The transfer station, yeah, yeah.
Houses.
I believe so. He didn't say he was.
So when our consultant gets here, he'll be able to.
That's great.
So Paul, you here for the summer?
Yeah.
When do we get one?
Yeah.
Will you go back and so that we get summer?
When does that start?
Saturday.
Yeah, hopefully. We can do it across our fingers.
Well, we needed the rain, but.
We really did, didn't we? I was getting, we getting a little dry out.
So I was glad that it stopped.
But I want to talk about, um.
I'm glad that it, it rained, so I didn't have to water my plants.
I planted some grass last weekend.
Well, it is.
Keep after it.
No, lime is the, lime could be, yeah. Vegetable gardens.
Oh, good. Hopefully they'll do well.
Cucumbers.
Awareness.
Peony, tomato.
No, but.
Beans.
Nice.
I actually thought it was like him to do.
No kale?
Not a big enough, we just have two raised beds.
Oh, yeah.
It's too wet way out back, by the time, by the time it would dry off in that back, it's middle of the. It's wet there now, we have to puddle that out, but it's normally the middle of June before we can get out there, so.
So, in, what is it?
We're not a five or one C three.
But what are you?
An organization, it's called Old Home Family. Old Home.
Normally my car, I clean it up.
Something to association.
Yes, is it an LLC? Is it in a, you know?
It's an association.
It's an associa-?
Yeah, it's an association.
What are you doing these days?
Hmm?
What are you working on these days?
Uh, we're in Eppen.
Yeah?
Stratum. I think Paul, we did some work over there, Brizl Farm, Stratum, they have two. Up on Stratum Heights Road.
Oh, yeah, yep.
They had twenty, they're doing it all the houses in there.
Wow.
And they just started another road open up and they get thirty-one houses going in there.
Grandson still on your crew?
Yeah, I got the two of them.
You got both of them?
Fight, not you.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I remember.
Well, that's what we write the text up to.
Sounds like a home for Americans got talent.
See, we just wanna sit over there.
Like a soon?
Sorry to see you. This is our picture. Okay, so that, our, this, like. Hi, how are you?
Good time.
What are you?
Hey.
How are you?
Good.
You have a lab.
Do you have a question?
He's got two.
That's fine, yeah.
Just not that excited about it.
All right, it's just now seven o'clock. Thank you all for attending this June meeting of the Rollins for Planning Board. In attendance tonight, we have our ex officio member Denise Knowles, Kevin Haynes. We will appoint Carolyn Kendall as a voting member for the purposes of tonight's meeting. Mr. Krebs, our consultant, is here, but currently in the hall. And our secretary Sarah. So our first order business is Madeline and William Campbell, one ninety-five Clement Road. Is there someone here to, is no one here to? Okay, okay. Okay. Yes.
Yeah, we'll need you to sit.
I don't know. Okay, so. I don't see anyone here from the Campbell property. So why don't we move on? Juggle the agenda here a little bit. Mr. Connolly, if you want to give a couple of, couple of preliminary consultations you'd like to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the, if the board pleases and the chair pleases, in the order that were listed for discussion purposes on your agenda tonight, I believe the Dennison matter is A and B is the Jesse Doe Road matter. My business partner Dana Lynch is here and he's prepared to present the Jesse Doe Road site plan preliminary. If it's okay with the board, could you go first?
No problem at all.
Okay. I'm gonna sit.
Needs more time to relax. You need to be able to see this?
No.
They'll lay this in the middle of the table here. You can't see.
Hold it up.
And I have hobbies with a plan in here as well. Very full of history right here online. And I'll break while we're here. We're in here for just a preliminary consultation. On here on, you said, behalf of C and J Transportation. If you all travel to the transfer station, you're well aware that C and J has a number of buildings further up at the end of Jesse Doe Road. One of which on your left, as you're about to get turned to the right into the transfer station, is a, basically a vehicle storage building for buses. Mr. Dalbert, our Rollins for, what's it called? The Rollins for Realty Trust purchased the land that we're speaking about tonight in two parcels. This parcel over here actually extends another, it's hard to visualize, but basically towards John about another ten or fifteen inches that direction. So it's a very long, narrow parcel, primarily composed of wetlands. And then the other parcel is a form of town, piece of town land located right over in here, kind of a high shaped piece right here. So in total, we're looking at a little over two point one acres of land. The proposed use is simply another building similar to the one that's further up the road. The intention here is to store three buses. It's, it's not as long as the other structures, sixty feet long, fifty-eight feet wide.
Would you mind swinging that door shut? It's just hard to hear. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So the way we've configured this is, the primary goal was to get the position, the building positioned so it was not approaching within the fifty-foot wetland buffer. And also, given its specific use, to be able to accommodate the turning radiuses of buses going both in and out. So for buses coming in, you can make the turn into the site and go into any of the three bays. And coming out to make the turn right to head back over across the railroad tracks. This is the V and M Railroad here. This is the drive up to the Colonel Leonard home and Jesse Doe Road headed towards, as I mentioned before, the transfer station. So we've positioned the building accordingly and we've gotten these driveways positioned so that they can accommodate the turning radiuses. We will be asking for a waiver for the driveway, but we had to do a similar waiver request for the other vehicle storage building. Each of these will be thirty feet wide at the weather white line. The regulation tells eighteen feet for one-way travel.
Is this one-way, do you?
Yes, the traffic pattern would be one-way in, one-way out.
Okay.
This parking area here is specifically for the drivers of the vehicles to park their own private vehicles. There is no specific parking category in the regulations for a use such as this. So we focused on what the actual needs of the facility were in order to minimize the pavement. And we put in the required one, that parking space. Essentially, we're keeping it very simple. The building will not have any water or sewer. The only sewer oriented amenity here would be that we will have trench drains within the building if the buses arrive, either late in the snow and ice or have been recently washed. Someplace for the drippings to run into and then we're proposing a holding tank at this time. And that holding tank is a thousand gallons. To be perfectly honest with you, I think most of the time, the whatever runoff ends up in the trench drains and pipes will evaporate before it reaches the holding tank. But just in case that is there to accommodate that need. As far as lighting goes, a similar package of lighting that we used on the other building, which basically are lights over the doorways. And I have a lighting plan in the package which we will submit. These are LED lights, power usage. The drainage system will be fairly straightforward and we've done an analysis already and find that we had no increase in runoff leaving the site. So we've basically taken care of handling water quality and left it at that. We will need to get condition use permits for two encroachments into the wetland buffer. One is a pavement encroachment over here. Right in this area here, we have pavement encroaching into the wetland buffer about five hundred and sixty square feet. The way we've graded this and designed it is so that all of the runoff from this pavement area comes back into the site, does not go off the edge and into the wetlands. So everything comes back into the site and is picked up by a catch basin over here. And then we have a slope encroachment because of the grading associated with the slope adjacent to the building and the pavement in this area. We have an encroachment of, again, about five hundred and sixty square feet into the wetland, twenty-five foot, hundred square feet. So those are the two conditional use permits that will be applied for along with this application. I will make contact with Conservation Commission Chairman again on one of their agendas. And we're proposing some landscaping. Again, in keeping with what we've done before, we've put some birch trees in here along the roadway. And I've also put a row of evergreens along this section here so that folks coming up into Church Street, really don't look into the end of the building here, kind of creates a little bit of a buffer, sort of, it's a visual buffer more than anything else. That's it in essence, and basically we're here just to see if you have any thoughts or concerns that we can address as we get these plans closer to submission to you for an official review.
Are you concerned at all about visibility from that row of, the row closest to me, yeah, of trees there for a bus driver?
The, these, these right here, no, these are, first of all, you come down to a stop right here.
Yep.
Okay. So our site distance concern here would be back this way and I've analyzed that, it's more than adequate. Similarly, you know, site distance for folks coming up the road, if a bus should be stopped and turning in is more than adequate. People are gonna check that.
Is there any spot for, you know, two headlights on that light?
Questions from the board, Kevin?
Visually from the outside, appearance wise, is it mimic the other storage building, the much larger storage building as far as structure, design, color?
I believe so, yes.
I find that blends very well for the capacity of the building. So it's very, it's very similar to what we've been seeing. And you've already addressed the line of sight issues, there's no line of sight issues as far as turn and radius and.
The finish seems to chalk a little bit over time, which tends to make it blend with the surroundings, so it's.
It dulls?
Yeah. It seems to be.
Like a flatter gray.
And will these trees you're putting in, will they be planted as somewhat mature trees or will they be planted as?
I've specified them at a minimum height of six inches. They're not our varieties, they're different.
Minimum height.
Minimum height of the evergreens would be six feet.
Six inches.
Sorry, C and J, you're going all up. I can cut it back. We can make it a foot. I'm sorry, six feet, six feet. And these are, I was thinking of the caliper, these, I think it's two and a half inch calipers, they're established trees.
I think those birch trees look kind of nice down on the street there.
Carolyn, you have a thing?
You mentioned, I'm not sure if you said storm drain or catch basin, but that looks like, is that, is that to be a, an installed pit with like riprap? Or is that like a storm drain to enter into the town's drainage system?
It's, it's, what it is, is there, we have.
Dana mentioned two.
Yes.
You mentioned the one side of the building, which is more of a Florida.
Right, with a tank, I understood that to be a storage tank.
Outside is stormwater oriented and what we're doing is picking up stormwater here in the catch basin. And conveying it out to an outlet here out into the.
Like a dry well?
No, not a dry well, it's like a discharge from.
Catch basin like see on the street with a grate and it has a three foot.
Okay, so then covert, okay, and then into the.
And then it discharges here, then it'll just flood.
The catch basins, the catch basins have, as Paul just mentioned, three foot slums.
Yeah.
So your sand and grit tend to settle out there and they also have hoods on them.
Yeah.
So anything that floats doesn't migrate out of the.
Like oils or that type of thing. They stay in the basin and not float out into the environment. So they have to be pumped periodically. Which they do because they have a oil separator done at the number one building where all the maintenance happens. So while the likes of Enco or Clean Harbors is here, they just didn't.
Right, we, we do that annually in town and I guess my only thought about that is I'm not sure that we have other catch basins in town that don't go into the system of outfalls that ultimately end up in one of the brooks or rivers in town. So you're just adding a different kind of structure that, you know, filters out differently and I don't have any comments about that, I'm just kind of noting that.
It's similar in some ways in that I'm sure all, most of the town basins have slums. But we gotta punch that, none of the town basins have hoods on them. Been using hoods for the past ten, fifteen years at least. It's a nice add-on, it's really short-lived.
But it's not out anymore, we're in, there's not a lot of runoff. And the town has to deal with this, as we all coming around Jesse Doe.
These, these, these catch bases are already.
Adding more down to the.
Okay, so you're privately emptying your catch basin?
Oh, yeah. They're all located within the lot itself.
Okay, okay, okay.
We will be picking up a little bit of runoff from this edge of the street, but we've designed it to.
Free goes into the lot.
Throws into the lot.
We don't shed anything onto the street at all.
It's a fairly compact and very self-contained development. We're, we're really impacting a very small portion of the whole two point one acres.
And this is low, okay.
Yeah, it really is. I think on the cover sheet there, we have a little over an acre, fifty-five thousand square feet of wetlands and almost an acre of uplands.
Is there good land out here near, or is it all out?
No, it's all wet. My contention, excuse me, my intention in putting this plant on the cover is to show the relationship that. This is the building that's been there for about seven or eight years now. And this is the building we're proposing now.
What's this, it does a several letter record right here.
That's, that's the parcel that Dalbert bought in January of two thousand seventeen from St. Hilary.
Right, that would be this piece right here.
Right. And then the pie shape piece he bought from the town, closed on that in April two thousand seventeen.
This right here is not, that's a several letter record. No, no, but don't let this line confuse you, I'm sorry. What this is, is a box around the area that says.
So this is viable land here?
No, that is wetland. It's from here.
Oh, this is upland right here, that upland right in there?
Yeah, that's that little.
That's this thing, okay, oh, that was on the wrong side of the line.
So here, okay, here is all wet.
Yep, got it, yep, got it, yep.
Are you proposing to merge these two?
Yes.
These two again, yes.
We'll come in with a lot merger form at the same time with submitting the site plan review application and the conditional use permit application, so it all one fell square.
So that's the intended clarification, which evidently didn't work out.
Dana, as long as you're holding it up, why are you flaring this out so much?
Because a bus does not have to swing out into incoming traffic to make that turn in.
They're gonna come from both directions.
Oh, okay.
More often, they're gonna come from this direction, John, because they're gonna come back from service, get washed, get serviced, and then come back to be put away to bed at night in a barn.
Okay.
And you cannot move these spaces over here?
We looked at.
I've looked at a lot of different combinations that seem to make more sense, given the amount of land that we have over here before we hit the right of way. Also, there's a, we push this over to as close to the property lines as you possibly can, still get a slope.
Okay. Is this a twelve and a half foot setback to pavement, which is exactly one half of the坝back in the Gulf of South? And we really, we wanted to keep any parking spaces out of the front yard, just for visual aesthetic reasons, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I don't think we have any parking in the front yards at any of the three buildings right now. This looks nice.
There's an occasional used car for sale on the lawn there, but. Hasn't been one for a long time. Kevin, did you?
You did say that there's gonna be no running, no sewer or water, there's no, so there's no restroom at this facility.
Correct.
It's purely drivers who park their personal vehicles on the outer apron, get into a bus that was already pre-service line before and leave directly.
Exactly.
Correct. So there's no, no running, there's no bathroom, there are no facilities at all.
No.
Pure storage, okay.
Anyone else have a question, comment? I think.
I think that's all the questions we wanted to set forth before the board.
Yeah. We will submit this, I presume this would be sent out for peer review or engineering review or what's the board's position on it?
Yeah, that's what we usually do, right?
Yeah, but what is your, what is your schedule? We would like to get this through the process as efficiently as possible.
Well, I guess I'm, typically the board, if someone's in a real hurry, I'll ask the chair if we can send this to the town engineer for review in advance of the meeting. If you want to wait and ask the, you can ask the board right now, if they're gonna ask for a peer review, if they are, you can get a little, several consultants down and have them review it. Otherwise, you can wait for a meeting and ask the board then.
I just assume get it over to them if it's acceptable to the board.
What do you guys think? I think that's the precedent we've been following. And I think what we've got.
Well, there are a few waivers that we're asking for, nothing withstanding. I think that would be the typical course that we would follow on the next meeting.
Yep.
Senator view.
So if you want to compress the schedule, I'd get it over to Jay right now.
Sure.
Or, I mean, since you have a. Since we have it all set and we can also schedule our appearance before the Conservation Commission.
Pre reports published.
Pre report is completed, yeah, the applications are essentially completed, I'm just gonna recheck anybody who's listed, it's been a couple of months.
Speaking of applications. We've taken the liberty of making a Word based platform of your Form A for town subdivision. Would you like a copy of that? Right, I just keep, you know, miniographing the nineteen.
It starts to get real fuzzy.
Nineteen space, space to fill in a year and I think, well, we're in two thousand eighteen now.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, I'll send it along to both of your email addresses and it'll be in a Word document.
Excellent, thank you.
Other than that, I don't have any questions, I think I, I've got a big coach here in the process.
Excellent, that's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, it seems like there's much more to go on.
Dana, Dana, just FYI, we're meeting next month on the tenth rather than the third.
So, yeah, gives you a little, little more time. Right, exactly. Okay, so next up, we have Phil Johnson, one twenty-five Bear Road.
So with me to my left is Phil Johnson, resides at one twenty-five Bear Road. For the record, I'm Paul Connolly from Civil Works on behalf of Phil and his wife Bonnie. Phil has owned, by way of a little bit of history, has owned one twenty-five Bear Road since nineteen.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, thank you. And that's represented in yellow on the plan that was approved by this planning board in nineteen eighty. Looking around, around the table, probably just Denise Knowles would recognize the signature of Shirley Curtis there, who was the chair of the board at the time. Anyway, this was known as the Emerson subdivision and at the time it created six lots, four of which are on Bear Road and one is. four of which are on Bear Road and one is, lot number one is on Fresh Creek Road. And since that time, there was a couple more lots created out of the Emerson parcel between lot six and.
So Paul, I'm gonna stop you one moment, I just realized that.
Yes.
Pink portion of Buckston.
I didn't bring that up. But, but sit.
This is just a preliminary consultation.
Just discussion, yeah.
I just wanted to have full disclosure, I didn't realize it was.
Miles isn't a mudder, I brought that up, but, I'm trying to think of, who's the owner before you?
Direct equity for me, she didn't live there.
Cut it.
That was two owners ago.
Two, okay.
Yeah, the one I bought the house from didn't really live there, she rented it.
Okay, okay. So anyway, yeah, Miles abuts the pink lot, because his lot is number four on the plan as shown before you. Now, speaking of the pink, the pink lot, that was sold just before lot two was sold to Phil. Lot one was sold by the Amersons to the Marstons. And the Marstons owned and held to lot number one from that point in the early eighties all the way up until last year. And at that point last year, Phil purchased it from Ruth Mars, Marston, right? So now Phil owns lot number two in yellow and lot number one in pink. And we should note that there were conditions on the nineteen eighty planning board approved plan regarding lot number one, the pink lot. And those two conditions say that no building shall be erected on this lot until town reopens a portion, or a section of Fresh Creek by voting to remove the gates and bars, that was number one. Number two says the road is brought up to acceptable town standards. I'm gonna get to that a little bit later on, I just wanted to point it out at this point in time. So what Phil and Bonnie would like to do is, their kids have grown up, have moved out of the house for some time now, and grandma and friends have moved out as well, and Phil and Bonnie are left in this big house, and it's way more than they really need. And I'd like to just build a little ranch on lot number one behind them. And that is shown on this one here. In order to best do this, what they'd like to do is do a lot line adjustment and an even land swap between lot number one and lot number two, about ninety-five hundred square feet, or about point, point two acres, give or take. So at face value, that would seem pretty simple, right? Even swap, well, nothing's ever really simple anymore. So what I've done is drawn up just a one-page list of what I see as potential hurdles, but just topics we need to discuss and perhaps we can get a better idea of where we should go next. So what we did over the past couple months is we proceeded to do a more detailed survey of existing conditions, showing geography, wetlands, slopes, existing houses and garages built by Phil back in eighty-five on the parcel. And as you can see on lot seven dash three, which is lot one on the subdivision plan, there are wetlands back there. And you can also see on lot seven three and seven four, there are steep slopes. Steep slopes pursuant to your zoning ordinance, which says anything with a slope of twenty-five percent or more is steep. Okay, those are shown in shaded areas on the plan. The reason I bring this up is twofold, or multifold actually. One is that back in nineteen eighty, none of this made any difference, okay? But more recently, I think in the two thousands, amendments were made to the zoning ordinance that said that in this zone, the country residential zone, you have to have a two-acre minimum lot size. But that two-acre minimum lot size has to be a minimum net two acres, free of steep slopes, free of wetlands, free of easements that otherwise encumber that net two acres. So obviously, we can't do that here, because first of all, these lots were created before that zoning amendment. And second of all, we've got steep slopes in the vicinity of where we want to do the swap. So if we could swap ninety-five hundred square feet of land, even Steven, between the two, and both had the same amount of steep slopes and the lots those steep slopes, I wouldn't be asking this question. But there's really no way to do that. And parcel A, as shown here on, of that ninety-five hundred square foot, about half of that is steep slope. Not real steep, but just a little bit steeper than twenty-five percent. On lot B, its equal-sized counterpart, there are no steep slopes. So if we were to swap this as shown by the proposed red new lot line, in essence, lot seven three would become a little bit more confining, conforming in a net sense. And lot number seven four would become a little bit less conforming in a net sense, because it would have a little bit more steep slopes and lot seven three would have a little bit less steep slopes. So I'm wondering, because of all these facts, if we need to go to the zoning board of adjustment and acquire a variance to do this simple even Steven lot swap, which will end up in a gross two-acre lot for each lot, lot one and lot two, or seven three and seven four, but not in a net sense. There's no way we can make either lot net two acres without steep slopes, wetlands, or other consequences. That's the first zoning question. The second zoning question is that if you can see the existing house that Phil and Bonnie live in up close to Bear Road, you'll note that a very tiny portion of the garage, maybe a foot or two, and a small portion of the house is over the fifty-foot setbacks. Fifty-foot setback from Bear Road, and you also have to respect the fifty-foot setback from Fresh Creek Road. The cure for that would also be a visit to the zoning board of adjustment, not for a variance, but for an equitable waiver of dimensional request. Take care of that at the same time. It's existed for thirty-five, thirty-three years, just throw that out there. So those are our first two zoning questions. The next question or topics for discussion is relative to Fresh Creek Road. Because Phil wants to build on it, those two conditions of approval that went all the way back to nineteen eighty come into play. And safe to say, right now, Fresh Creek Road is a class six highway subject to gates and bars, which is, there is no gate, there is no bar there physically, but that's a virtual gates and bars. I already recited the standards, the conditions based on that plan. Phil is presuming approval of the zoning board issues and the planning board lot line adjustment. Bill is prepared to improve approximately four hundred and eighty feet of Fresh Creek Road and bring it up to acceptable town standards. And then we have the gates and bars, so I don't know if we can go one of two ways, I'm gonna throw it out there for discussion. One would be to request at town meeting that four hundred and eighty feet of Fresh Creek Road, the first four hundred and eighty feet be taken out of.
Class six status.
I don't know.
Subject to gates and bars.
Move the gates and bars.
Gates and bars.
So it's gonna take, move the gates and bars.
Or sort of change the class to class five from here, I don't know.
Well, that's one point, John, but on the other, on the other end of things, Phil doesn't want to necessarily impart the.
Class five road rights?
No, the class five maintenance requirements onto the town. He's willing to plow it, maintain it, keep it up, pave it, you know, bring it up to standards. But, you know, if there is a, if there, I guess if there is an adjustment that can be made to that condition of nineteen eighty, where it says instead of removing the gates and bars, just allowing the improved road to remain as class six status, understanding that the gates and bars will be four hundred and eighty feet back, virtual gates and bars, that's okay. I mean, again, we go either way, but we don't want to impart that maintenance and that cost onto the town.
Can I interject a question?
Sure.
John, I don't know if you would know this, but if that's the condition of the original subdivision, how much flexibility do we have in present to revise, you know, conditions in an old subdivision? Do we have that authority?
I think we have that authority, I think you need to be careful, you know, I wasn't around thirty-five years ago. But I don't, I don't think, even if we, I think, I think this board would have the same, would put the same conditions on it anyway. So I don't, I don't think, I don't think this board's gonna do your, I don't think your board, your opinion's gonna change as to how, you know, what has to happen with this road, but you know, it might be a little question to run by, you know, your attorney, but I think you have, you know, you, something that you can be approved and two years later, they can, you know, someone can come back to the board and ask to have something modified, and I think you have that right. But I, again, I think your opinion would be the exact same as the board in nineteen eighty, whatever it was, eighty-five or eighty-one.
Just as a matter of life safety, we would design the driveway into the proposed house such that it could also act as the hammerhead, if you will, to be wide enough for, with ample turns, for emergency response vehicles to turn there instead of having to build a loop, cul-de-sac, or a turnaround elsewhere. I mean, the driveway's gonna be there anyway, so it can serve that purpose.
I had a question, because we dealt with issues like this in the last year regarding another class six road, and as I'm hearing, it's not a problem on the propellers at this point to upgrade that to standards, which we discussed at a later date, obviously, to be for life safety. My question concerns more on this back lane here, that's still part of an Emerson estate, this larger parent parcel back here.
This board recently, I'd say recently, within the past couple of years.
I'm just thinking of future down the line of what else pops up on this road.
Right.
But that's where I'm going, Paul.
Right, so a couple of years ago, this board approved the Colella subdivision that created the large, it's like a thirty-three acre parcel on, to which the Buckston, I don't know if that's her name, but this gentleman was a headmaster over at the St. Paul's School and has built the house right, you know, somewhat close proximity to Benny Colella's house down there, on the land that he sold, that Benny sold to this gentleman. And I think, I think they're living in it now. So that big parcel abuts all of Phil's lot seven S three, as well as a good deal of the frontage of Fresh Creek Road down beyond Phil's lot seven S three.
Down to the actual creek, and I think.
I don't know if, I shouldn't be guessing at this, I had the plan with me. It was done by AMIT survey, yeah, there it is.
It was so big, they had to do it.
Can you remember this? There it is. Oh, they basically split the Colella parcel into two different pieces. This is the Colella house, you know, the big colonial house down there at the end of Old Mill Lane. And then they created this, this is a thirty-five acre parcel here.
And it's all conservation, isn't it?
Exactly, the shaded area is all conservation area. So to answer your question, from here down to the creek? Yeah, you couldn't build on that side of the road anyway. So the next question becomes on McHugh's side, and that's current used land, so I can't speak to what Dan and Sally's plans are for the future. Dan and Sally have owned that land now for thirty-two years, I believe, they bought it off of the Franklin estate, yeah. And the items under topic three, Fresh Creek Road, I mean, I just wanted to identify them tonight. Certainly if you had input, we're not looking to solve any matters tonight, we just wanted to hear what the board's thoughts were. And if I, if I take the, if I took the temperature of the board, I'm thinking that our next step would be to go to the zoning board of adjustment.
I think that's the next logical step, I'm interested to hear what John has to, what John thinks.
I think it's ridiculous to go zoning board, but there's no way around it. I mean, sadly, these ordinances, well, not sadly, I think these are good ordinances, they weren't around in nineteen eighty-five, or eighty-one, or whatever the subdivision was approved. So there's no way you can approve this lot line adjustment without zoning board, so you gotta go. And you gotta go anyway for the house. So, you know, and as you, as Paul said, there's no way you can change this to get two acres of viable upland without steep slopes, it just, it's not gonna happen.
I mean, we could leave it the way it is, but, I mean, we'd end up back here asking more conditional use permits to build on steep slopes and all that. Phil and Bonnie would prefer to build on a flatter, if you will, portion of the land, which could be achieved by a lot line adjustment.
And then it's another ninety feet of pavement, and then it looks like there's a, the road dips down.
It does, it did.
Precisely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did, it did.
But the gates and bars would have to be addressed as well, whether that's.
That's a selectman issue, I mean, you know.
Does that go before town, or?
I think it does, you know, I don't think that, I don't think the board of selectmen in Rollinsburg have the authority to change that, but I, again, as a question for the selectmen, I don't know. I'm pretty sure they don't have the, I don't think they have the authority here.
But I don't think we could make any action on it without knowing that clarification either, just simply because of.
I mean, the condition still applies, the nineteen eighty condition still applies, that they, you know, they can't get a building permit, they can't build on it until it's, the gates and bars issue is resolved and this is brought up to class, classified town road centers, so you know, we can do the same thing again.
But they still address the fact of the net buildable.
Yep.
The net lot size. You swap in good land or bad land, and it's, I kind of understand that.
This is a three, this is a three or four-step process, you know, zoning board, planning board, board of selectmen, probably town, you know. So it's not, it's not gonna happen this, you know, quickly.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Lot one, if you were to achieve this lot line adjustment, it's no longer a grandfathered old lot, so you would still require a variance from the net lot uses. I'm just trying to clarify that point, because I feel like we're dancing around that, but do you, you know, that doesn't really qualify as a buildable lot with a minimum lot net two acres, as you spoke.
It does, because then it falls under non-conforming lots of record.
Is it still non-conforming when you've done the lot line adjustment?
Yeah, it's the same size.
Well, it's the same size, but you've made that adjustment though.
But the net two acres.
The net's actually better at that point.
Better, better, but this lot works for this lot.
Yeah.
But you've all did the grandfather status.
That's, that's my point.
Well, the variance, the variance.
You can't make it more or less non-conforming, because it's conforming to begin with.
It's buildable, I guess, you know.
The variance will, will address that, I mean, yes, I agree, you can't go and, we can't do this because it's, yes, the grandfather today, we start moving these lot lines, they're not gonna be there. They need an increase, and the variance will remedy that problem, the net.
Well, it will allow that, but, you know, isn't that another specific issue on top of that to allow it to be buildable? Or am I confusing the issue?
Well, it's buildable, it's, this is, this is. Well, it's buildable. It is, this is, this lot's buildable now. If, if, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that Phil could get a, if he could address the Class V gates and bars issue, he could get a building permit on this lot, because he could get, he could get a subject system design.
But you need the two acres net. He's got two acres gross.
But it's an example, but it's, but it's a grandfather.
Because of it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Also remind the board, Lot 1, Lot 7S3 has been taxed as a buildable lot for the past 38 years.
That's a mistake.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
It's why I'm so, I'm sick of being that. It wasn't current use or anything, it was just...
Oh, the valuation was, was lower than your typical paint growth frontage lot, but it wasn't like the valuation that current use land, that's for sure.
No. Can I just throw something crazy at the board?
I like crazy.
So, one of the, one of the things I, I, and this is, Rollinsford doesn't have a lot of Class VI roads, so I don't know what you think about, about Fresh Creek. But Miles and I talked to, and Mike, who's not here, talked to a developer that was interested in developing the McHugh parcel. It never went anywhere. So the question I guess I have is, if, does the board want to see this road upgraded? And is there another solution? And I don't even know if Phil would be deemed, you know, or this would even work, but could you build a driveway through here and get a variance for that? My, my only concern is, you upgrade this to Class V road standards, now suddenly you've got more lots available here. You've got the ability to some extent extend it even further. And again, it's really, it's a policy decision. I don't, and I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm only saying, you know, we've got a lot here. I almost had to say, let's modify this, put a driveway through here and prevent this from happening. But it's just, again, maybe a cockamamia. Because I hate opening up this land to development if it doesn't, if it doesn't need...
Last fall, they said you could build up to 600 feet with private driveway or one lawn.
Right, that's...
Just a town approved.
Right. That's pursuant to the highway book, the road book, published at the state level. The general guideline has been 600 feet, which we're well under with this. The, to answer your question, that was, I didn't state it as such, my fault, but I was heading into the not changing it to a Class V highway situation, rather keeping it Class VI, such that A, the responsibility for maintenance costs and everything is still on Phil, and B, because of that, nobody else can come to play unless they, you know, can get all their approvals and...
Well, but this condition is, is a little, I will admit, is a little weird. Road is brought up to acceptable town standards. Well, what the hell is acceptable? Does that mean, I think it's...
Greenwood.
That means it's Class V.
18 foot, 18 foot wide.
And that means it's Class V.
That opens it right up.
It opens it up.
Not necessarily. It can be, it can look like a Class V, but it's not necessarily a Class V. In other words, it could...
And I, and again, I'm just trying to...
Yeah.
This is really a policy decision for either this board and or the board of selectmen, but I think it has the potential of opening up land that, you know, isn't available for development today. But that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And it's, and it's on Phil's dime.
Phil would, Phil would rather do a 12 foot travel driveway, okay?
And I'm just saying, does it have to be in this right of way? Can it be somewhere else? I'd rather, see, if you gotta go to zoning board anyway, how about getting a variance for not having frontage and just, and putting a driveway? It's just a thought, Paul. I, you know. If there was, if there was Class VI roads throughout this town, and we dealt with this issue before, it'd be different, but we, this, we don't have many. And this is pretty nice, pretty nice land.
Yeah.
One of my concerns is, at the end of the road, is to put a couple parking spaces for people to go hunting and stuff, so they don't block me in trying to get out. So I'm gonna have to put up a sign or something, or, and a couple extra parking spaces at the end of it.
So that's why, that's why we've extended it about 100 and...
Because a lot of people still go hunting down there, and they park there.
So it's, it's shown proposed pave about 120 feet beyond your driveway. We would, we would have to put up some signs so they don't block the driveway. Oh, and the reason we did that is pursuant to your zoning, we would need pavement, acceptable town road standards, in front of at least the equivalent frontage, 180 feet in this zone, in front of the Lot 7S3.
But you'd create, now, with 400 some of the people, you'd create two lots here on his dime. I, which is cool. I'm not, I'm not saying it's bad.
Only if they're allowed to...
Sure.
Subdivide and they're allowed to...
Right.
Enter the whole harmless agreement and the maintenance sharing.
Sure, absolutely.
But I think John brings up a good point, that no matter what you call that section, once you upgrade it, you're doing half or more of the work for this whole side of the street to, you know, do the next half of the work, or have the same exceptions made to have that whole 30 or 40 or 7, no, 70, I don't know, 55 acres? You know, I, I think we're sitting ducks with that.
Your, your point is well taken, and I, I think you're right, as long as they are allowed into the, into the, given an invite to the party.
And I think that's the impact.
Yeah, at that point, it's, it's still a public way, right?
It's a public way today.
It's a public way.
They upgraded to Class, Paul's right. I mean, you know, we, we're all dancing, right? You know, if, if, if he upgrades it to Class V, the town, the selectmen could keep it a Class VI to say, you know, but someone could push, you know, I just, it's, it's sort of the entree of this piece here.
What's the standard with public?
For 50 trips, car trips per day or less, 18 feet of pavement, two foot shoulders. That's a new book.
Greenview.
And Greenview is the same standard, right?
Greenview, no, that's, that's actually 28.
Oh.
Yeah, that's industrial road.
Oh, sorry.
No, well, what I'm saying is, they tried to put a subdivision in, you would have to apply...
For the additional traffic.
Right. And when, and that road isn't that wide.
So he brings up a good point.
They couldn't, they couldn't get a, they'd have to get a variance.
Right. Your, your basic, your residential house lot brings 10 trips per day to the table. So, the point you get, two, three, well, if you subdivide it out too, and you got remaining land, that's three, plus two on this side. Phil's existing lot and the, and the Marston lot, you're gone over 50, and that brings you up to a whole new set of standards. So, good point, that's a good point.
And to that point, I'm wondering what you're, you know, you're talking about setbacks here to Fresh Creek Road. If you're gonna upgrade to town standards, we wouldn't want to debilitate the town's ability to make it a Class V someday, should they want to. So, you know, I, I would think that there would have to be some deeding of property to make a proper right of way for whatever its potential could one day be.
Precisely. We're gonna let that happen on the other side of the Fresh Creek Road.
How, what's the right of way now?
It's, it varies from 32 feet to 40.
Not 50.
It's not 50. You see what I'm saying? So we're not, we're not providing the total enable here. If McHugh wants to come in, he's gonna have to deed in a strip and do more improvements.
But, and we talked about the future too, and what could develop, that, that could happen anyways, though.
Sure.
I mean, that could, that could, regardless if, if this goes nowhere, owners along the other side of the street could certainly propose a plan as well.
Same thing.
Yep.
I mean, everybody has a right...
Yes, absolutely.
With their property to...
That's a great point, yeah. To get back to your point about non-conforming lots, zoning ordinance address that, addresses that. And it says, "The following principles control lots that do not conform to the current provisions of the, of the ordinance." Goes on to talk about the C1 and OSD zones, so I'm gonna skip over that. Then I'm gonna go to the provisions. Says, "No action shall be permitted to change the boundary of the lot unless it brings the lot closer to conforming to the requirements of the ordinance, and it makes no other aspect of the lot or structures on the lot more conforming." Shouldn't say, you shouldn't say less conforming.
Yes.
No, it says more non-conforming.
More non-conforming, yes.
So, to that end, and as we just discussed, we need to go to the ZVA, okay? Because...
Don't cure that.
Yeah, don't cure that. Second item is that, "No, new structures shall be permitted on non-conforming lots only if all the following conditions are met, in addition to the requirements of Section 1132 of the ordinance." I forgot to go back to that, but, and they are, "A sanitary water supply and sewage disposal are provided." We can do that. "We have enough well radius to protect the proposed well, and we have an area for a septic system." And B, "The proposed structure meets all setback requirements." Those are shown on the plan, because we wanted to make sure our adjusted area would accommodate the ranch house back there, wish it will. And it goes on to say, "And number three, if the conditions of Sections 542B cannot be met," we were just talking about, but we need, we don't need to go there, because we can meet them. So, bottom line is, it allows for building on a non-conforming lot. And in this case, as John said, also, we go to the zoning board adjustment that cures the, the other issues about filtering out there. So, for such a little simple lot line adjustment, I, I don't mean to throw an awful lot of questions out at you.
That's very interesting points. This would be a learning experience.
You like to challenge us. So, yeah, I think, I think your next stop is the ZVA. I don't think there's anything to play around that.
Part of our reason too, in all honesty, of coming here tonight is that we don't want to go to the ZVA first. I mean, we wanted the board, this board to see it, to know that it's out there, and, because you'll, you'll know it's out there once there's a notice posted by the ZVA. So, at least you're, let's say you're advised.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your, your time and...
See, and also, I think it also might be smart to go to, meet with the board of selectmen and ask, and at least get that question answered. Who has the authority to change the gates and bars restriction? Because it's...
I think the last time this came up, it was, the answer was at town meeting, right?
Town meeting only?
This is the same incident as the boy party, right?
Yeah, that's what I think.
But, but there was a difference in the town reports about the named Class VI roads. And, and that, I think, is a difference between the two cases, because I believe that there was trouble finding Shady Lane, but Fresh Creek was listed. And, and I'm not entirely sure about that, but I think that's, that may be a little difference.
Certainly, we can talk to the select board in, in general terms and more specific terms, also relative to what their preference might be. In other words, would they rather see the, the gates and bars condition left in place? At least the status left in place, but a modification, say, to Condition 1 of the 1980 approval, which might say, "No building shall be erected on this lot until town, the select board allows, per se, whatever." Consider the language about the gates and bars. Again, we're not, we're not opposed to the upgrade, but we're not pushing it.
Yeah. What, what's the, the ordinance, the imperial surface, MS4?
MS4. I'm not sure how much that pertains to this, but the select board at this time is discouraging the beginning section of Shady Lane from being paved, because we're an MS4 community, which means that our storm water is regulated by the state and federal government, because we're on the river. So, the select board, at least in that case, preferred not paving. I can't speak to what they would prefer to hear, but also, they have final discretion with whether or not to allow building on a Class VI road regardless. And, and so, you know, although the board changes every year, or potentially changes every year, you might, you know, ask them...
Yeah.
How they feel about that. Although they'll never box themselves in, but you can get a feeling.
Well, that's a great, great idea. Thank you very much.
You got it easy, you want to talk about it?
That's why you had to go first.
I'm surprised the plane wouldn't even create that lot. Why'd you even do that?
I, I was wondering the same thing.
I'm surprised the plane wouldn't even create that lot. Do you want to keep one of these for your file? You're welcome to, keep two if you want.
I'll, I'll keep one, since I have a personal one. And of course, I would have to replace myself. It's a good thing.
All right. I want to, I want to take one advantage of that. Again, thank you very much for your time, and also for the... I think that can be a good, good addition to the, to your part there. Probably more so than anyone ever envisioned, to get that little bit of extra use out of that area there.
So we never typically see the condos, but that's not who was out in the hall before.
Hi, everybody.
No, it's, it's... I hope they weren't dispirational, closed the door. Just couldn't hear.
Door wasn't locked outside, I don't think. Thanks. Take care. See you, Mr. Diane.
Okay. So, approval of the minutes is gonna have to wait. We're gonna wait minutes this time around. Correspondence, there was none. And any additional business to come before the board?
And just to be sure, to be clear, we are reading on the town?
Yes, yep. I, I heard back from almost everyone that, that the third wasn't good. I think I'm the only one who would actually show up, so. All right. Was, was there anything else to come before the board? I didn't, I didn't hear any. All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? It's heavy. I don't even know where the guy is going. I've never been there.
A little bit.
So, no.
No.
Yep. So my home was just like here, way up here, yeah. And now I understand why it was buggy. I had no idea if this was wet now.
I know, because I went to, I didn't have any of the information about it either.
Yeah.
And I don't recommend it.
No. Hey, Sylvia, how are you?
I'm good.